So I'm gonna call the planning commission meeting to order. It's seven oh one. Um, and. We are gonna do the pledge of allegiance. I actually, I was gonna have Bill. Put his, so I have a flag here. So for everyone that can stand, I know it's like, so if everyone who can stand, actually, should it go that way? It should go that way if it's the camera. So. People are looking at it correctly.
Uh, nope, that's backwards to me.
It is backward. Okay.
That's better.
Alright, so if we can stand, so. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Alright. I got my little flag there. Alright, so um, if I can do the roll call, Holly them, I see is here. Joe Kimpelida called. He is feeling under the weather, so he is absent today. Uh, Don Coantonio, I see. There we go. Julie Eaton. Hey Julie, I am here. Bill Rice is uh, excuse absence. And I see we have Craig McCormick. So Craig, um, you will be seated as a regular member tonight.
Okay.
And that definitely, I mean, it gives us a definite quorum, so thank you. Um, Tom, this is the time where I would make an amendment. I wanted to just add a few things to the agenda.
Yeah, you guys can vote those in if you'd like.
Okay, so um, I would like to add um, some staffing changes among the commission and the town staff. To the agenda sustainability uh, committee representation and cro- the CROG meeting. Um, so do I have a motion to add those to the agenda for tonight? Okay, and Don seconded that. Okay. Um, all those in favor, please say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Uh, any objections? Any? What's the word I'm looking for? Abstentions? Alright, so the motion passes that we will add those three items um, under new business after the capital improvements. Alright, thank you.
I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt everyone. I'm Amanda Blaze. I'm the new commission clerk.
Um. Oh, Amanda.
Hi, just for my accuracy of the minutes, um, can you just please refresh my memory? Who made the motion and who seconded it?
Uh, Don Coantonio seconded. It was, was it you Craig that? Yes.
Yes.
McCormick.
Okay, so Craig, you motioned, Don seconded.
Correct.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Alright, so Tom, do you wanna, well, I mean, I remember we did this last year too. I mean, we've done it right every. So do you wanna walk us through?
Yeah, basically I could run you through what the um.
Can I interrupt though? So I didn't see minutes.
Um, that's. Um, approval of minutes for the December twenty twenty one meeting um, was on the list and it wasn't Dropbox. I've got a copy of it. Were they there?
I didn't see it in the Dropbox. Why did I not see that?
I don't know, maybe I printed it offline.
No, but Craig, you had it.
Yeah, Erin, I got it off of the uh, systems or town website in the planning commission section. It had the uh, yeah.
Okay.
If you wasn't, if you're, if you wanna go through it, you can. If not, um, we can push that off until the next regular meeting if you don't feel comfortable. It's up to you.
I mean, I, they were fairly short if I, I mean.
Oh yeah, it was just the election of officers.
Yeah, so I mean, if, has everybody else had a chance to review them?
I'm sorry.
Did you, Holly, have a chance to review the minutes?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay. Don, did you, I mean, we can definitely, if most people, I'm, I'm fine, cuz I, I. It really wasn't a long meeting, so okay, we can do that at the end, sorry. Oh no, that's, yeah, there we go. Alright, so actually Bill is our secretary. So, and he's not here. So, um, Craig, do you have those pulled up?
I have them printed.
Would you mind taking people through the minutes for us?
Not at all.
Okay, awesome.
I've gotta remember how to do this, Holly, or Erin, sorry. Um, but I think I just read through, correct?
Well, just like, I don't know how many lines, but usually we do the first page.
Okay, yeah, sure. So I've just, um, right, so as we look at page one, which is lines one through forty eight. The way that my um, minutes printed. Uh, so I was not at this meeting, so I can't opine on whether these are accurate. I didn't listen to the uh, uh, the meeting. Um, audio, but does anybody who was in, in, in attendance have anything to report on lines, lines one through forty eight? Hearing no?
Uh, I looked at him earlier today and uh, I, I just wanted to, I, I'm having trouble pulling it up now, but did we mention the election of officers? Is that included in the minutes and the outcome of that election?
Yeah, I think that's basically what the minutes are, right?
Yeah, that's line twenty five through thirty four.
Okay.
Yep.
Then uh, then I didn't see anything. I think we're fine.
Okay. Line four, uh, page two, line forty nine through sixty nine is essentially uh. Well, it's pretty straightforward. Anything there that seems out of, uh, out of kilter? Hearing none? It sounds, uh, uh, Erin, as though we've got consensus that the, the notes are good, the uh, meeting minutes are good.
Alright, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes from December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one?
I'll move to approve them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And any abstentions?
I'm abstaining, staying. I wasn't there.
Same, and I didn't watch the recording.
Okay. So, um, Tom, that's three. Two, do we need a?
No, you don't need a super majority or anything. It's just minutes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Alright. Alright, so Tom, do you wanna?
Okay, yeah, getting into the CIP and the proposal for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three season. Uh, we are looking at nineteen items. Um, there is a golf course irrigation system replacement. Um, multi-use connection trails, uh, development from Route ten to Curtis Park. Uh, multi-use connections trail development from Curtis Park to Terrifill. Um, a pa- uh, the performing arts center grant match slash rotary park restroom project. Uh, Terrifill Park Court Replacement. Highway pavement management, sidewalk reconstruction projects. Municipal site and safety improvements at Town Hall. The old Drake Hill Road slash Flower Bridge repairs, um, design phase. You know, uh, the Eno Building Entrance Improvements, um, as well as Eno Parking Lot Improvements. Um, a primary clarifier that would be through uh, the WPCA. Um, district network infrastructure, that one I'll look up for you just to make sure. To, 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 where's that one?
What is the primary clarifier?
Um, I believe that has to do with the, those, the treatment of sewage.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Thirteen. Nope.
Is that clarified enough, Erin?
Yes. I don't think we need to go into any more detail.
Oh, the Board, the Board of Education is the um, the district network infrastructure. Um, the Board of Education will be doing some um, networking infrastructure for IT. Um, the district climate control improvements, um, that's as well as Board of Ed. Uh, Tooten Hills Water Distribution and Drainage Systems, that would be a Department of Public Works. Um, Central School will have electrical service, um, distribution uh, was dated nineteen fifty, so they'll get some upgrades. The Central School will also have um, replacement of the EPDM roof. Um, I would assume that's their um, flat roof. The tariff is Terrifill School will also replace their EPDM roof. And the Terrifill School will replace the nineteen eighty four modulars on site. Um, in looking at the P O C D. Um, I saw these touching on the sections, uh, section seven enhancement to community facilities. Um, section eleven sustainability, section twelve community facilities. Section thirteen transportation needs, and section fourteen infrastructure needs. If anybody like details on any of the particulars of each item, I can try my best to let you know what they're involved.
Hey Tom, I just had one question. This is my ignorance showing. Um, on the actual six-year capital improvement program, uh, schedule, there's a column entitled Funding Source. And in that column, there are letters or acronyms, and I'm not familiar with what those are.
Um, I, I, I could agree with you. Um, I know the ARPA funding is in there. When you see ARPA, that's the state funding from the COVID crisis. Um, some of them will be grants and uh, that would probably be your um, G's. Um, your uh, B would probably be straight budget item.
Okay.
Um, and then um. S U F for like the primary clarifier, I would not know off of hand.
Okay.
But that covers a lot of them. I mean, ma- mainly what you'll see is their budget items, grant fundings or um, ARPA fundings.
Okay, I mean, it, it's not really germane to what we're being asked to consider tonight.
Oh yeah.
But I, I just, it's just trying to get educated here on what these things mean, so thank you.
I understand, yep. But I think as far as these are concerned, if the commission feels comfortable, they do seem to reflect the needs of the P O C D. For those categories of improvements and um, upgrades and uh, meeting the needs of future uses for. Community um, infrastructures and buildings.
Any other questions?
Uh, Erin, I just have a new guy question. Um, uh, beyond um, you know, weighing this against the P O C D. What's the expectation of uh, the planning commission um, with respect to this? Do, are we voting on these or we? Um, advising or uh, giving approval? What um?
That's a great question. Yeah, so we, this has to come to us per statute um, for a referral. So we, we would even either give a positive uh, or negative referral. So if we didn't agree with these and we didn't. Get it, I mean, we didn't think this um, matched the P O C D. Then we would send a negative referral saying, no, it's, it's not in line with, with our plan of conservation and development. Um, and as Tom pointed out, you know, he pointed out several sections where this does coincide in the, you know, with our P O C D, so. Um, so then we would, if you agree with that, then we would give a positive referral. So we vote. On whether or not to give a positive, if somebody would make a motion, we would vote on that and then that would go back. So it's, it's just for us to. To give kind of our blessing or not, and that would then go back. Um, I think that goes back to the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Yeah, correct. Um, I would draft that positive referral and uh, submit it to the town manager's office for the next regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting.
So Erin, and you know, unless there's any more discussion, I'm happy to make a motion.
Bro, go for it, yeah.
Okay, so uh, I'd like to move that we um, refer, return a positive referral to the, the Board of Selectmen. Uh, to um, you know, uh, to uh, you know, proceed with these capital improvement projects. Uh, with the finding that these are consistent with the P O C D. And as in so much as they are, we think that it's appropriate to proceed.
Nice. Perfect. Alright, so we have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Right, all those in favor of sending a positive referral back to the Board of Selectmen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any dissensions? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously, so that will go back to the Board of Selectmen with a positive referral. Great.
I'll take care of that.
Alright, um. So I wanted to, I know that there's been some movement and you know, um, I apologize, it's been three months. Uh, just about since we met last time and Tom and I have been in contact and there has not been any business. Um, and. A town staff have, you know, they've been um, downstaffed. So I think we can make an announcement, Tom, right? That we do have a town planner.
Yes, you do.
Oh my goodness, I can't remember his last name, George.
George McGregor.
McGregor, okay. Um, and he is starting, I believe, on April eleventh.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, um, I was able to be in the first uh, wave of interviews. Um, for the town planner, they had some really good candidates. And um, so I'm excited to, to work with George and um. So he will be starting on April eleventh.
Hey Erin.
Yeah.
Where, where is Mr. McGregor coming from?
He's coming from Vernon.
Okay.
The in the south. So he's, he, he just moved uh, up north from, I think it was North or South Carolina, one of the.
South Carolina.
Thank you. See, see, got time. Hi, this is our, you know, Laurel and Hardy here. Um, so he, he's coming from South Carolina. Um, moved up here about a year or so ago, was been working in Vernon. Um, and uh. He lives in the area, so this, this is much closer to his home as well, but. Yep, go ahead.
Erin, um, I would like to register my disappointment. Uh, on her, on how the hiring process was um, conducted. Um, specifically that most of the members of the planning commission were not, were neither consulted. Nor informed of the process of hiring a town planner. Which maybe normally wouldn't be an issue. But the hiring manager had already um, made some serious missteps previously with a valued. Um, resource in the planning department. Uh, for undisclosed reasons resulting in a lawsuit with an undisclosed settlement. Um, and that this hiring manager had neither any background in, in. Uh, in, in uh, being a town manager before taking on this role. And in all of the time as a town manager has never attended our meetings, our planning commission meetings, so. I understand that most everyone on the planning commission has more experience than either. The hiring manager or the person that has been hired as far as Connecticut planning law goes. Um. The um.
Can I, can I, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, there's, is one being consulted, the other one's being informed. It's been three months and I'm not, this isn't you. I'm talking about. The way the hiring conducted this, because in the last several weeks. Members of the town have come and asked me questions about the process. And in the um, in the process of doing so have told me some rather disturbing things that I have no knowledge of. Whether they're true or false. Um, all I know is that I've been approached by many people who are neither town officials or employees of the town. Nor elected officials who all seem to know more than we know about the decision-making and who the candidate was. So I, I just feel that this was not professionally conducted. And again, this is not on you. I'm just.
No, no, no. So what I would say is, um, I appreciate your comments. I, I was involved as the commissioner, so I was, I mean, as the chairman, so, or chairperson. Um, and so once I was elected, yeah, so I did reach out um, to town staff. They said absolutely. So I represented the planning commission in that process and I was in on that first day. I met all of the candidates that were considered, weighed in on who I thought they should bring back for a second interview. And then that was conducted with town staff. I didn't, you know, I was informed. Um, you know, I, we, I, I wasn't uh, in touch with the town manager. Um, and so I knew of George's, their intention of um, hiring George and then it went to the, the Board of Selectmen. So I represented um, the commission. If, in fact, we had been meeting. Um, I probably would have given more of an update along the way, but we were, um, the Chair of Zoning was involved. Then during, in my group of people, um, there were many town people involved. Tom Roy was in my group. I'm trying to think of who else. Um, we had a business person, Steve Antonio, as well as.
Oh, I've, again, so other people have informed me of this.
Yeah.
I felt that one, more than one person.
Yeah, when we did this before, because Bill and I actually talked about this, and I said, Bill, you did the interviews for, you know, and he said, no, I didn't. I didn't do interviews. I said, I know someone from planning did interviews. Well, Bill couldn't, and he appointed uh, Alan. And Alan did the interviews that was on the um, committee that hired Michael Glidden. So, um, it's, it was the same process really, but it, it was, I, I mean, I thought it was transparent. Again, I think you probably would have gotten more had we had regular meetings. But I, I, you know, they did invite many people like myself and zoning people uh, to be part of the interview process.
Well, they invited only one person with planning experience.
Well, well, right, but that's, I was representing, right, they, we wouldn't, I mean, last time it was Alan. We, we were not invited last time either. We, one person in the chair, but when the chair couldn't go, he. Um, you know, gave the nod to Alan. So it was the same process as it was last time. They wouldn't have had more people. It was already, I think in my group, there was probably. I don't know, I'd have to count eight people. I mean, it was, it was a pretty large group and they had another group. To do another interview on that same day. We were all kind of playing chess, so.
I just feel that the group should have had more planners in it, it was a planning position. And again, I only say this because when we questioned what had happened before, not in Michael's case, but. In the, in the question, in the issue that we were, the town was sued. Um, and again, we, we don't know what, it's a total undisclosed amount of settlement. We were told to basically shut up and mind your own business and I held my tongue and I sincerely regret it. Um.
It is duly noted, duly noted, but I think they did, don't forget, they're not just doing planning, they're doing zoning, they're doing lots of other. Outreach. Tom, maybe you can say how many other, and I think they had representation. From all those, cuz it's not just the planning commission, so, and they did have representation from all those. Um, you know, they wouldn't have had multiple people, but I, just to let you know, I, I. I do think it was transparent and they did have a good cross-section, so, but duly noted, I mean, you know, that's your opinion and. Um, you know, certainly we, I can mention that to Maria.
So is it true that we have a person that has. Um, less than two years of um, experience with Connecticut planning law?
Um, Mr.
And terminated from their previous job?
You know what, I'm not gonna, uh, go ahead, Tom.
I, I could just give the background. He's got twenty five years of planning experience, um, but in the state of Connecticut, he's operated for um. Thirteen or fourteen months. Um, he was uh, gainfully employed at the town of Vernon until he was hired here.
Okay, okay, um, but as we all know, eight thirty G doesn't exist in any other state.
Oh, I, I understand and um.
Okay.
I know.
I'm just saying that I didn't wanna hear this on the street. It's.
Nope.
Hard to be pumping gas and someone who is concerned, thinking that an elected official might know more than they do. That's, I just wanted to register that.
It's on the record.
Yeah, I had thought about pulling us together, but it, it just wasn't enough to pull a meeting together to. Um, Tom and I, you know, anyway, but yeah, unfortunately, I think you, you would have known more had. Um, had we had more business, but that's something to think about.
You know, there's something called, I mean, it, it isn't really, I, I expect that, again, we have seen a lack of professionalism. From this hiring manager and. An email is something that the technology exists to write.
Yeah, and I could have, I could have sent an email, you know, but um.
Well, I mean, I think she.
I was waiting to do it in person, to be honest, but I, you know, it's something to think about. It's all, you know, this is all good feedback. Yeah.
Alright, but again, we don't really know many facts. I mean, I, I just brought up some things I'd heard that wasn't disclosed. I don't know if you know them. You were part of the entire process. I, we should have been the hiring manager.
What I, what I will say is. Um. And I, you know, professionally, I always get, somebody comes to me with an issue, right, and then somebody else. And it's totally different, right? And it's always something in between. And so what I feel like is. You, you get two totally different stories, so I always have to be careful what I listen to and what I hear. And so I, I will say, I think there is. Um. Some feelings around some of the other people that were interviewed and what decision they made. And so I think what happens is there might be some. Um. There, there just might be some feelings that exacerbate certain things, but I would say be careful. Because you might be hearing things that might not be a hundred percent accurate.
Um, I have no doubt. I don't like rumor. I.
Right, right, and I.
I'm registering my disappointment.
No, no, and so I.
Still haven't been informed about credentials or why or where.
Right, so, so what I, my plan, my plan.
Transparency.
Well, I, I think my plan actually, and Tom, I was gonna actually bring this up at the end of the meeting, but. I, I really wanna sit down with him and the commission early, as early as possible for him. To kind of give us that information, Holly, and for us to be really honest with him about. What we see, where we see us going, some of the pitfalls that we've seen, some of the pitfalls we might think that he might have to deal with. I'd like to do that sooner rather than later. Um, our next meeting. Uh, Tom would be scheduled the day after he starts. I don't know, and I was gonna ask your opinion. If you think it makes sense for us just to be able to sit down and have kind of a meet and greet with him, like a, could it be like a workshop where we don't necessarily?
Oh, you could, you can call a special meeting as a workshop to um, go over the um, track that you're on and where things are going. I'm sure he would like an update. Um, he is gonna have a pre-employment meeting uh, with staff in order to let him know like that the P O C D updates and all that stuff. So yeah, that wouldn't be a bad idea. Um, as, as he starts off, um, I don't have the schedule in front of me right here. But I'm sure there could be a, either a special meeting or even that first meeting could be held. Uh, just to go over topics of interest and to get um, things directionally in the, in the right direction, cuz I know the P O C D is an issue. And there's gonna be some other things coming through as well, so.
Do you think it's too early to do that his second day?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, if it's a light meeting, I don't, I think, I mean. Uh, as a planner myself, as assistant town planner and the interim town planner, this is our job. He deals with the Planning and Zoning Commission in Vernon. I mean, I would assume that he would be available for that. Um, I, I jumped right in the mix when I started, so.
Yeah, that's true. So I, what I would say is let's plan to have that meeting. I think it would be April eleven. Right? Oh no, April twelve.
Yeah, yeah, he starts on the eleventh. Um, we can take a look at that and if it, if it's, if it's a, if it's a little too much, we could just call a special meeting for. The following week or something like that. That, that way it's because it's not dealing with direct business and it's kind of a meet and greet. So we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay, now the other question association with that would be, would we be able to do that in person or would we still have to do it on Zoom? I'd rather meet with him in person if I can.
I understand that. I would try to call on him during staff hours. I don't know. Where we're at as far as changing meetings because of the interchange of staff. Uh, we had that same conversation with zoning and we were waiting for him to be in his chair before. We did in-person meetings versus virtual meetings. Um, if you want, yeah.
Okay, so that it might be virtual. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can always call on him during staff hours. I mean, we have a late Monday night. Um, and I'm sure he would entertain any staff members who have questions.
Okay.
Or commission members, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead, Craig, I'm sorry.
It seemed, it seemed to me that Julie had something she wanted to say a little while ago and I wanna.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julie.
No, it was fine. I was trying to like, make a point that I don't know if we were following the agenda and if we needed to move to add discussion.
Oh, this was part of staffing changes.
Oh, we, yeah, they amended the um.
Agenda. No, I know, but the discussion around the staffing changes, I just think that that should have been a motion to be added to the agenda. Not just the conversation. So I was just trying to see if we needed to stay on track.
Oh, I did add.
But it's fine now.
I, that was part of the motion, Julie? It was staffing changes was.
It was the discussion around the staffing changes, the additional conversations. It's fine.
I'm not following, okay.
That's fine.
Oh, well, for us to have a discussion, you mean, should have been, okay, I.
Yep.
So if we put a topic on the agenda, we, we can't discuss it unless we also add the ability to discuss the topic.
I'm not, I wasn't sure. It was more of a clarifying.
Yeah, it was more, yeah, it's a good question. I, I just assumed it was under the umbrella of staff, but I don't.
I, I'm sorry, that's what I thought too, Julie. I I'm sorry, that's what I thought too, Julie, I thought.
Yeah, no, it's it's a learning curve for all of us.
So, all right. Tom, do you wanna kind of update people?
Oh, no, other than that, staff is pretty static, there will be some changes, but at this point. Well, unbeknownst to all of you, I'll be moving on. I know, Aaron, you probably heard that, I was gonna save that for the very end of the meeting, but now that you, now that you put that in space, I'm moving on to Middletown with an opportunity there that I couldn't pass up. It doesn't have anything to do with the hiring process or anything like that. I was approached and I've been approached several times and it just happened to fall into this window of time. But it's been great here and I may be back, it depends, I mean, Middletown is a big. Twenty thousand more people and a lot more going on, it's a little more hectic, but we'll see how it goes. But, can it put me on the spot, I was waiting until the end for that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It was clearly in the staffing changes part of the agenda.
Well, again, that was all part of the rumor, Mill.
Yeah, well, the rumor's true.
I mean, not your, not your change, but, oh, the, but there were changes as a result of.
Now, I I I was approached. A couple of months ago and went through the process, it just happened to coincide with the hiring process, so. But there's there's no animosity on my side, I've enjoyed my time here and like I said, you never know what the cards hold in the future.
We'll meet you at Eli Cannon's.
Sounds like a plan.
So, Tom, when's your last day?
I've held on as much as I could, I will be leaving on the sixth so that staff is not without a planner for more than a week. So I tried to hold on as long as I could. But Laura and Joe are very competent at what they do, should. Should fall in a light meeting schedule and I have full faith in them and. As they know and everybody else knows, I'm available for any questions during my, during that week or thereon after.
So who I, so I'll be communicating with someone obviously the week after you leave about the meeting.
Oh, yeah, 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 Joe, Joe and Laurel will take care of that, that's not a problem, and if we, I'm gonna make notes when I go into work tomorrow about what our discussions were tonight.
All right, great, thank you. Also, so I understand, I got an email that. David Bloomy has moved from us to library board. And Julie is now seated as a full member. And Craig came back, yay, Craig. As an alternate. And congratulations, to have you back. And it's nice to have Julie now, Julie is a full member, so Rich Cortez, who was an alternate, has. Resigned from the committee. So he will no longer be with us, I, we will try to fill that alternate position, we're in the process of trying to find someone, so. If anybody knows of anyone who's interested. As a result of Rich leaving, that leaves. A potential, it does leave an opening on the sustainability. Is it committee or commission or group, because Rich was our representative. I think they meet once a month. On a Tuesday, maybe the third Tuesday.
I know Tom, I know Tom Roy's the staff liaison for that, I'm not quite sure when the meetings are for that, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
No, I think Amy McLean Salz, or Amy McLean mentioned that. I think it's the third Tuesday, like five thirty or six thirty. Something, then maybe it's six thirty, so I don't know if there's anybody that's interested in being a part of that committee, I. I don't have too much information other than that, but it's a once a month, probably an hour commitment.
And if you're interested in more information, I would reach out to Mr. Roy. He's fairly readily available, I mean, he's pretty busy, but he will get back to you if you have questions about the sustainability committee or. He may have the contact of the chair so that you could ask pointed questions if you're interested.
Aaron, did I understand you to say that that? Opening is. For the representative from planning to be a part of that committee?
Yeah.
It has to be, in other words, the person filling that role has to have come, has to come from planning.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and it it does not have to be a full member, it can be, you know, because Rich was an alternate, so it's just somebody from planning, and I know when that came up. He had expressed an interest and he was involved in the. The plan, remember the sustainability plan we took a look at and. Gold or silver, right, the.
Silver.
Silver, thank you, yeah, so he was a, he was a big part of that, you know. Amy McLean, it told me, it's a really good committee, I think Eric Wellman or former first selectman is on there. It's a really good group of people and they're they're doing some interesting things, so if anyone is interested. Let me know, or if anybody wants any more info, I can reach out to Tom Roy to try to get more info for anybody. So. But they really would like somebody to be a part of that.
Aaron, I I have some interest in it, but I've just heard about it, I would have to review my travel schedule because.
Okay.
It's all the, you know, that means three Tuesdays out of a month or two minutes, so.
Yeah, but if you were interested, Holly, and there was a Tuesday you couldn't go, I could probably, you know, be back up or, you know, if somebody.
I'm afraid there might be more than a few Tuesdays. I I don't, wouldn't, wanna do something that I didn't attend.
Oh, no, I I totally get it, so, yeah, if you want to take a look at your schedule and let me know, that would be great. Okay. And then Bill sent me something around CROG, did you get that, Tom?
I did not, is there, I saw that you were saying something about a CROG meeting.
Yeah, let me see if, yeah, so the Capital Region Council of Governments, it's Thursday. And I just got this, I know, I think it got lost in the shuffle, you know, with. It probably, I don't know what, but it's Thursday, seven to ten, and it's. Oh, it's a Zoom. I don't know if anyone's, I can't, I have two meetings that night myself, but if anyone, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, if it's something that I can email, Joe can email blast out to the commission. You could always send it to Joe and he could share that information with them, if it's a Zoom meeting. Sounds like something, if you're interested, why not? It's a bit of a commitment at a late hour, but unfortunately, I was unaware of it.
Yeah, I think it just, and that's what Bill said, I guess it went, I don't even know how he, it it sounded like it was kind of late. So, all right, I'll send this out to Joe.
Yeah, just ask him to disseminate it to the commissioners.
Okay, perfect. All right, I will take care of that. And I think that's all I had. But I think it'll be really great meeting with the with the new planner and coming in with, you know, and we are gonna, I am. Anxious to look at that P O C D, we started that work and so. And I know during the interview process when we were. Talking about what we kind of looking for, I had mentioned the idea of us meeting. With zoning, you know, doing some point meetings, because we haven't done that in age, right, Holly, I mean, I think we did it once. Or tw- in the very beginning when you and I were first on, so, you know, some things like that, so. Be thinking about things that you might want to discuss with him, I think this is our opportunity and. You know, he, I I'm sure he'll be open to hearing what we have to say.
I'll be sure to brief him to hit the ground running with certain items, so. Beware.
Well, I know it feels like it's been forever, I mean, it's been three months, you know, and it's, yeah, so. And Tom, it's been a pleasure working with you, please, so good luck in Middletown.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, I've had a great time here.
Yeah. So, all right.
You never know, you might see him again someday.
That's true.
I know a lot of people who live in Simsbury, so if anything, you'll see me on the street.
So, all right, well, I think if that is it, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, so Craig. Made a motion and seconded.
I'll second it.
All right, Don, and all those in favor, please say aye. Any abstent, oh no, any. Dissension? All right, so with that said, we will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-one, thanks, it's good to see everybody finally.